Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the city council meeting of Monday, October 11th, 2021. Can you all hear me okay? Okay, I asked for your patience as this is my, not my first Zoom meeting, but my first Zoom meeting where you're all not on Zoom other than Donna. So, Justin, who is calling the roll this evening?
I'm prepared to call roll.
Okay, Justin, if you would call the roll this evening, let's go to item B, please.
All right, council members, Arab?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes, I'm remote from Alma, Michigan.
Griffin? Hubbard?
Here.
Michelle's?
President.
Keo?
Present from participating remotely from Auburn, New York. Okay.
And student representatives Gilbert?
Present.
And Booye, Buzz Keerly?
Present.
I hope I got that right.
I think you did pretty well, Justin. All right, we have a full, full council, which is great. Approval C tonight is approval of the meeting minutes from our September 27th, 2021 meeting.
A move we prove is presented.
Motion by Fisher. Help me, who, if some, there's somebody raising their hand?
I'll second Griffin.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Motion by Fisher, second by Griffin to approve the meeting minutes. Ms. Fisher, any comments on the meeting minutes?
No.
Ms. Griffin?
I have two comments on page five and under item number five. In the description of the motion, just as a public hearing for the regular city council meeting, it is not that it's a court, but that should be a common point of. Under my comment, minor, if you could just move the from 1996 to after signature.
Okay. Other council member comments? It's really, it's really hard for me to see the, the room, so you'll have to speak up if you have them. I'm assuming no other comments? All right, Justin, please, um, yeah, Paul, why don't you let me know if somebody's got their hands up? That'd be a good way of doing it. Okay, Justin, why don't you call the roll to accept the minutes?
All right, I have motion Fisher, support Griffin, and council members Cousins?
Yes.
Arab?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
And Keo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We have no prearranged participation tonight under item D. So we're down to item E, which is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
A move we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Fisher. Is there a second or a hand up?
I second, yeah.
So now I'm with the second. Thank you, Sinam. Okay, discussion on the agenda this evening. Okay. Oh, Zach, floor is yours, sir.
Going to say I have to leave at eight thirty today, so.
Okay. Well, you will try to be efficient and ahead of that schedule. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, Justin, if you would call the vote to approve the agenda, please.
All right, I have motion Fisher, supporter Rob, Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Keo?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. We have an agenda, item E or F, first time on the agenda is declaration of conflicts of interest. Do we have anybody on council that would like to declare anything this evening? I don't see any. No, nothing there. Okay, I, I, I just want to declare that in the city of Plymouth, I am working with Verizon Wireless as part of a project in my professional career. The applicant who signed the application, David Hasslinger, and I have met regarding a relocation or a possible relocation of Verizon Technology in Plymouth. I don't believe there's any conflict in me taking action on either the two items in Dexter, but I wanted to disclose that I do know Mr. Hasslinger, I guess I'll say professionally, I don't know Lane who's here on the the Zoom meeting as well, but recognize the name from, from emails, I think. So just wanted everybody to understand that, that I am working on behalf of Plymouth on something, but that doesn't relate to these two things. So if you think I should risk abstain, I'm happy to do that, but wanted to disclose it to council for their concurrence.
I don't see anything, Sean.
Okay, so hearing none, I'm assuming that I'll be able to take action on the items tonight, and thank you for that. Okay, we are on to page two of the agenda, public hearings, item G, we have none. Item H is non-arranged participation. I cannot see the audience, so Paul, I'll need you to tell me whether there's anybody in the audience raising their hand. We'll start there. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak this night?
We have someone on Zoom.
I see a hand up on Zoom, correct. Yep. Okay, why don't we let the hand on Zoom go then, Justin?
In person, attendee, I was on there with everybody. We'll take Mr. Murphy first, he's at the podium, Sean.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Murphy's at the podium, so we'll have, it's okay with you.
Perfect, Mr. Murphy can go first. Thank you, Paul.
Good evening, my name's Robert, I live at 3713 Bristol Drive, in the Bronx. We have all the residents of the Bronx in reference to recent removal replacement of the streets by cane and asphalt, which is on the quality rebuilding terms of Michigan or Milford. I'd like to thank all of us that enjoyed public utilities, streets, all members of the city hall and council. And I would especially like Donna Fisher, Paul and Mary for putting up with me since 1977. That's when I started the street, which been kind of fun and enjoyable. But it must say, I find it was better when it was written. So, thank you very much and have be safe, God bless.
You're going to still come visit us, right?
I'm sorry?
You're going to still come visit us though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Appreciate your comments and your patience as we've, I know we've waited a long time to get those improvements done. Is there anybody else in the audience, Paul, that would like to speak this evening?
No hands, no hands at all.
Okay, Justin, if you could help me with the hand that's up on the Zoom meeting, please, the 4265103 number, please?
They're unmuted?
Hi, my name is John Scharf. I am at 5327 Webster Church Road, and I am a citizen in the service area of the Dexter Area Fire Department. I happen to also be the treasurer of Webster Township and a former attendee at the fire station design conference that was held for one week in Fort Worth, Texas some years ago. I am also a former member of the subcommittee that helped on the design and construction of the Webster Township Fire Station. I want to speak tonight regarding the item on your agenda, fire station guiding principles. Before I mention the one principle that I want to push very strongly, I strongly recommend that you hire an expert architect that only does fire station design and other public safety buildings. Hire that person as a consultant that works directly for the council and use your regular architect to do all the heavy lifting on the regular architecture work. That requires a small investment of money, which will pay very big dividends on the quality and operational function of your new fire station or rebuilt fire station. So the, the design principle that I want to strongly encourage the city council to adopt is to focus on designs that minimize the cancer risk for firefighters. I think that you cannot find another guiding principle of more import. One of the things that I've learned in, in my experience is that breast cancer and testicular cancer in retired firefighters is an enormous problem of epidemic proportions. And I would strongly encourage you to consider that in any design you pursue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your attendance this evening. Justin, do we have anyone else on the Zoom meeting this evening?
I, I assume Lane is associated with the items.
He's with Verizon, Justin.
Then I see no others.
Okay, very good. And no one else in the audience raising their hand, so we'll move on to number or letter I on the agenda, page two. Communications, we have our upcoming meeting calendar. Are there any comments on the meeting calendar from either staff or council? Okay, seeing none, we will move down to item J, reports, J1, our public services superintendent, is Dan in the audience there?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Dan.
Hi, Dan.
What everybody got outside today? I don't know how many more of these we've got left. I provided you with a two weeks' report. Do you have any questions on my report?
You'll have to help me, Paul, if there are people with their hands up. I see somebody waving a hand. Jamie, maybe?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, James, last week, sometime about Thursday between our meetings, I met Ann and Justin to take a tour of the water facility use that we have there in the city. I appreciate your time.
You're very cool. Thank you for taking the time.
Okay, great. Any other comments? Dan, it sounds like the Dexter Crossing project has gone well. Anything you want to add there?
It's actually turned out real well, and even the grass, I drove by this morning looking at the grass, it's like four inches high. So they nailed that too. So I actually think it turned out real well. We do have one flat spot on Lexington. In the middle of the road, we're going to actually get figured out, we're going to make that repair, but other than that, I think it turned out real well.
Okay. Questions for Dan?
Okay.
Oh, Zach?
Yep, not related to this report, but just something I want to throw out there. While, well, this past weekend, I think I was playing around in Washington County DIS, so it's maybe you or some other staff. And I noticed that we have wellhead protection or our old field over by here on farms, but we don't for the one at the high school.
We do, but it's much smaller.
We, okay.
It might not be on the website, we do as well, but being so close to the high school, they made a shrub there, considerably what, what it should have been originally.
Okay, maybe, and that's just a thing of us contacting them, I think I'm sure it shows up on their county records.
I am correct.
That was all, thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Are any other council members that are in person wishing to speak? Donna, any questions for Dan?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, I am as well. Dan, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next up, under community development manager, Michelle, how are you this evening?
I'm fine. How are you doing, Sean?
Doing well, thank you.
Excellent. How's the rest of council today?
Okay.
Little weak, but that's okay. I'm presuming the mics are muffling the sounds. All right, so you have my report in front of you. And before I go into any kind of updates, do you have any questions on what's been presented to you?
Michelle, I have a question on the plug-in vehicles.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a plug-in spot at my own house, but are those required to be inside the, the 220, 220 outlets?
Yes, they're, they're, the draft ordinance that we have so far would have them in a garage in a readily accessible, convenient location. If it's a carport, the same principle.
Okay, I couldn't tell from the close proximity to designated vehicle parking that was in the, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay. There were some updates on all of our reports as well as some additional questions from council that were provided in your supplementary packet. Justin will go over those and any questions we can elaborate on. If there's any questions on supplemental from myself, let me know, and I can address them now.
I'm not seeing any hands up at this time.
Okay, the only other thing is, and I, and you'll forgive me if this brain of mine doesn't remember. I know that I've, I've shared it with some of our boards and commissions. The Michigan Trails Magazine, the one that we put an ad in and have for about the last five years now contacted, contacted me and let me know that for 2022 Dexter is being, Dexter will be on the cover. And the editor asked if I knew of or who knew of a family that could, you know, would like to be the model. They don't have a budget for being able to hire professional models. So we started with Parks and Rec with one of the members on Parks and Rec that is a family. They were thankful but preferred more anonymity, and so it recommended the chair and her family contacted Becky, and she said, yeah, absolutely. Well, they did their pictures yesterday, this weekend, and this is just one of the whole host. So they will, the, the editor will pick from the selection, and Becky and her family will actually get a framed picture because they can't pay for models, but that's their, that's their thank you gift, and Dexter will be highlighted on the cover of thousands of Michigan Trail magazines itself. I'll be getting extra ones this year or for next year. Any questions for me? Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Michelle. Appreciate the updates and the good work. Paul, any questions there in person?
Whoever is clear.
Okay, thank you, Donna, you're good?
I'm all set, thank you.
As am I. Okay, well, is there anything that anybody has to report under any of the board or commission reports? If, I'll just, there's nothing bolded, but I'll just ask that as I pass through there.
I just have one, Sean, do we have any closer resolution of the library's board appointee?
So I've talked to a couple people, and I've got one more to, to speak to, Paul, so I plan to have that for the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you for your help.
Yep, good question. Any other board or commission question? Okay, I'm assuming there's no subcommittee reports at this point, and we're down to the city manager report, Justin, from the East Coast somewhere?
Yeah, yeah, well, live to you from Boston. Actually, we went to the Boston Marathon this morning.
Oh, yeah.
Which is really cool.
What was your time?
You know, I was keeping pace with the frontrunner who came in just, just over an hour and it was, it was really cool to see. I, we've never been to Boston and you know, our trip lining up accidentally with the Boston Marathon was a, was a nice happenstance. So that next leg of the trip is, is Washington DC, which I've also never been to, so that'll be cool as well. So as far as our report goes, we're, we're making progress on hiring of, of the assistant to the manager. I've also gotten some interest in the recording secretary position. And so I'm going to be meeting with some folks after I get back about that, so you won't have, have to have me calling roll anymore. But other than that, you have my, my report in the packet. If there's any questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer them.
Paul, any questions in person there?
I don't see any at all.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Fisher?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Justin, just one, one for me, is the plantings for the workday, is that along the park slope near the stairs?
Correct, yep, yep, in, in behind the library. Paul wanted to, to do some filling in of that area and then putting down some additional mulch, so that, that's going to be the, the focus of the workday on the 24th.
Okay, great, great, thanks. Just was looking for clarification on the area. Other questions for Justin? Okay. I'll move down to my report. Paul asked the question about the library board. I do have, or library board position. I'm in the process of that. And I do have one recommendation for one of two parks open positions, and that's on the consent agenda this evening. I was able to speak with Melissa and enjoy talking with her very much last week, so that is before you, if anybody has any questions. I am out of town until this weekend, and we'll be back in town over the weekend, so does anybody have any questions for me on my, my brief report?
We have one. It's why, I just want to say that looking at the director of major food parks commissioner, she looks like a great candidate, and I was pleased to see her qualifications, and I think that she's been the winner of the job for us.
Thank you. She'd love to hear from any, but any of you, so feel free to reach out to her as I did. Can welcome her in. Okay, seeing no more questions from me. Are there any council member reports under item J7? I almost said I7, but J7. Seeing none or hearing none, we'll move down to item K, which is our consent agenda, and there are six items on the consent agenda this evening.
I move we approve the six items listed on the consent agenda, bills and payroll in the amount of $231,636.77. The parks commission appointment, the trick-or-treat hours from five to seven toward the bid to Tanner for the backwash pond not to exceed $20,325. The load I tree planting bid for 2223 and the purchase of an RTV from Booyan for $27,500.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Is there a second? Was that why?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hubbard. So motion by Fisher, second by Hubbard to approve all six items on the consent agenda. Justin, if you would, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Sure. Council members Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Arab?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Griffin? And Keo?
Yes, motion carries seven zero for the consent agenda. Thank you, everyone. We have no unfinished business under L portion of the agenda, so we're down to our new business items. We have six. New business item M1 is consideration of a Verizon wireless, small cell wireless facilities permit application near Alpine and Maine. So I would like, if it's possible, to get a motion first and a second, and then we can have discussion and turn it over to Michelle. And then if Lane needs to speak, we can hear from Lane. Does that sound okay? I need a motion, I need a motion from somebody if it's possible.
Oh, this is Jamie. Go ahead and make that motion, that's on page 49 of the packet, motion to approve conditional, based on the conditions outlined on the
Okay, thank you, Jamie. With the motion, is there a second, please? Second by what? Okay, thank you both for that. Okay, Michelle, you're at the podium?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we'll turn this over to you to give us some background introduction, please.
Okay, so I'm going to go into a little more detail than I normally would because this is our first small cell wireless facilities permit application. So the applicant Verizon Wireless has applied to install a small cell or small cell equipment on a new 40-foot pole that they would own and install. It would be located at the intersection of Alpine Street and Main Street, and I believe you have a map on the plans that provided.
Yeah, Michelle, Michelle, the map in the first part of the packet is a duplicate of the, of the other one on Dexter and Arbor. It does not show the location.
There is a picture though, yeah, somewhere.
There should be a picture on the site plan because the site plans are two totally different ones, aren't they?
In, at least, at least in my packet on page 53, the, the small picture on the front is the same one as the one for
Sean, I saw that too, that there is a picture somewhere. I'm trying to find a page for you that shows the location of Alpine. Look at me, J.D. Green.
Eighty-three, okay, thank you.
Did we get the plans in the wrong order? Okay, I, I thank you so much for finding it. Okay. You have multiple components of this application. You've got the application, which we received on August 10. We received their site plan, which has a revision date of September 14th, and we received it on September 17th. There's an attestation of operations that was dated on the 14th and received on the 17th of September. The FCC certificate of compliance, which was received on September, September 17th. There are coverage maps, again, received September 17th. We have a certificate of insurance that was received September 14th, and there are photo simulations of the new pole and the colors of the pole that were received on September 30th. Excuse me. The first thing that staff and city have to do is to do a review of for completion. And per section 50135 of our code, once we receive the application, the city has 60 days to approve or deny. That's part of the reason for citing all of the dates. Ad nauseam today, sorry about that. Because we, that starts what they call the shot clock. The city must determine if the application is complete or not, and then we have to provide written notification to the applicant within 25 days of the submittal of that application. If the application is determined not to be complete, there has to be written notice to the applicant and a detailed explanation of what information is missing, what's required, et cetera. Excuse me. The deadline for approving or denying that application is then extended by however many days it takes the applicant to provide you with that supplemental information, and that continues until you've got a complete application. For this particular application, it was submitted on August 10th, 2021. That triggered the shot clock deadline for taking action, and that would expire on October 9th. The application was determined to be complete for the purposes of the first part, and written notice was provided to the applicant on September 4th. And while it was complete, we did notice that there were, there was information that was going to be required to do the comprehensive review, which is the next step. And so in telling the applicant that information, it, it helps to set, reset the clock and allow some extra time. And doing up that, doing that upfront, loads it and gives that applicant more information, it actually reduces the amount of time on the backend. Excuse me. The correspondence for that is in your packet. The applicant submitted the revised plans and the additional information that was needed on September 17th, which therefore extended the shot clock by 13 days, and so the new expiration or date by which you need, need to take action is October 22nd. The city must then notify the provider if there are still incomplete items within 10 days each time things come in. Because the information that was still needed Because the information that was still needed as part of that comprehensive review was so minor, we were able to go back and forth on email and we decided that we didn't need to extend the shot clock any farther past October 22. So for the permit approval process, according to section 50135 for, once it's deemed complete, city staff and the applicant, I'm sorry, consultants do the comprehensive review. If there are any issues or concerns that are raised that need significant attention and that a meeting might help to to help resolve, that can be done. In this case, we did not have that. Once the city's review is completed, the city council reviews the application as you're doing now based on the recommendations from city staff and consultants. If the council finds that all the requirements of the article, your ordinance have been met, it shall approve the application. And and that's that's key here. There is no wiggle room. If it's not, it gets approved. Found approval and satisfaction satisfactory completion of any conditions of approval that council may grant, the city managers and superintendent of public services sign the application and the community development manager, that would be me, issues the permit granting the wireless providing the access to and use of the public right of way for the activity that was requested and approved. For the comprehensive review, myself, the city engineer, OHM, and our wireless communication consultant, Urban Wireless Solutions, reviewed the all of the documentation, the application, the revised plans, and all of the supplemental material in accordance with the ordinance. The reviews which company the memo, I'm sorry, those reviews all accompany this memo and determine there were some minor issues still which the applicant does need to address, but resolution of those shouldn't prevent you from taking action tonight. In your in the memo, I outline those items. The coverage map, they did provide one. The map communicates a basic understanding of what, you know, what they're trying to show. But as a map goes, details really understanding what they're trying to communicate isn't there. So we need a little bit, we need a detailed explanation of the coverage maps along with labeling of the maps as is needed in order to understand. There's a requirement that the distance of the proposed facilities and the nearest property line, road race, rights of way, etc. The plan does show the location of proposed utilities in relation to the nearest property lines, road race and rights of way, excuse me. It also shows overhead power lines. Unfortunately, it doesn't have the underground utilities. And while city staff, DPW, and the applicant does know the location because we have had onsite meetings, etc. The plan really needs to be revised to identify those locations. Excuse me, so that there's nothing that can come back on the city. All right. And for the applicant's own risk factors, section 50135 subsection 1E9 requires the submittal of a work plan that describes the location of proposed work and the work to be performed, the limits of the disturbance in the public right of way, and the method and materials to be used. It doesn't appear that a work pin has been provided on the site plan, although I believe the applicant did have a communication with our wireless consultant. But we we do need to have that on the plan. It needs to be clear clearly marked and identified. So there's no question about whether it is or is not submitted. Section 1351E416 requires a written statement from a licensed engineer explaining the reasons that no current existing pole or structure is adequate for adequate for the to provide the services that are being requested. Excuse me.
Thank you.
You know that DTE has that the applicant did go to DTE for a location and DTE did reject the requests. But we do need that in writing from the applicant as as required in the ordinance, but it's also requirement built from the state law. So excuse me, I'm sorry. We're not asking for anything outside of outside of what the law requires. Section 1, I'm sorry, 51349 requires the applicant to install poles in a manner, size, and appearance that are consistent and in conformity with existing decorative elements within our downtown. And although the poles that the applicant is the pole is the applicant is providing isn't an exact match for the style, in other words, the fluided base, etc. The applicant has gone, I don't want to say great lengths, but has has really worked diligently to provide a pole that would fit in blend in with the downtown. Be similar in color and appearance to the closest possible with our existing poles. You have you have a photo simulation that shows and the color swatches to to pick the proper color. So we are comfortable with what's being proposed. And that's it. You've got the motion and the conditions that are required to clear up the minor condoms. And I can answer any questions that you've got.
Paul, are there any questions from the members of council in the audience there?
Chief Brad, you have a question?
Yeah. So page 83 of your packet, you see where this pole was proposed, we set up these cell towers notoriously bad for fire departments and fire stations. Has any research been done or any of the studies been done to look at this and see how it's going to disrupt our operations or our communications with central dispatch? We work off 800 megahertz. We work off of AT&amp;T. Every fire station that I've had that has a cell tower close to it or a communication tower, are we getting disrupted? And so there needs to be something in this contract, and I admit I haven't had a chance to read it through. If there are any disruptions in the service to the fire department, Verizon needs to take care of that. So just asking if any of that's been done.
Michelle, was that under consideration?
It is. It has not been something that we were aware of, and I have not seen anything from any other communities on it. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't add a condition of approval that to address it. I don't think our wireless consultant is on the line tonight. Otherwise, I think he would be able to provide more information than I am. It might be that the applicant can address it, but at a very least, you can add a condition that to address the chief's concern concerns and provide documentation, the applicant provide documentation that would demonstrate that there would either not be any disruptions or demonstrate how disruption can be resolved.
Can can we ask Lane? Can we unmute Lane and ask if he can? He was nodding at least. I'd like to just give him a chance to respond or.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate everyone allowing me to attend the meeting. And Michelle, I do these by the thousands. I go these millions, thousands about the best synopsis of what we're trying to accomplish I've ever heard. So thank you for that. For that detailed analysis. To answer and forgive me, I don't know who was speaking there about the about the the different megahertz and interference between between companies that are operating wireless facilities. We get this question a lot. This is not uncommon. We obviously do operate with separate licenses and separate bands for that very reason. We do understand that sometimes depending on how close facilities are to each other, there could be some outside possibilities interfering is very, very rare. It depends on what what the fire station is operating on. I think you said they're operating at 800 megahertz, I believe, is what you mentioned. We operate around 1900 megahertz. So but but to satisfy their request, we are more than happy. I can get our engineers to put something together in some form of writing. We can we can have it to you in whatever form you would like to satisfy that that concern about making sure that whatever our 4G small cell installation is will not interfere with anything that the fire station is using. We can absolutely do that.
Lane, is it the same for 5G? Or is that that just a 4G, 5G? Is it the same thing? There's no problem?
A little bit different on the on the on the megahertz, but it's it's on the high end. It's on the high end.
But the language, the language is going to cover whatever you decide to use with this poll for?
Yes, we can do that. And 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 I'm actually going to be tomorrow with our engineers on that to actually go over the coverage map that that we're still trying to fast forward with you guys. I'll make sure we put some wording in there on what I like to, I guess, know is for sure what the fire station is using, just to verify that. And then we'll take that and and put something in writing to reflect that we won't be interfering with that with their service.
Chief has had the point again, sir.
Okay, Paul, Chief, Chief, go ahead, Chief Smith?
Yeah, our radio system, we operate off of 800 megahertz public safety band. All of our computers, our laptops, our cats, information works off of AT&amp;T FirstNet. So it's 14 in the in the south world. And I guess that'd be where I have a bigger concern about any kind of influence or interference there.
So that that's all the information I need. Yeah, I can take that and go back to our engineers and we could put something together for you guys to reflect that and show that there won't be any interference. You're looking at a thousand, there's a difference of 1,000 megahertz between 800 and 1,900 over 1,000. So.
Okay, Chief, thanks for bringing that up.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions from council that's at 3515? Jamie, looks like you raised your hand, maybe?
Thanks. One more, nine more question, I guess. The reason I had so many questions about this particular location is I was just envisioning the time in the future when potentially we're redesigning the streets there that are reliant and making pedestrian traffic. So part of me was thinking, oh, if we're going to be tearing up that road and doing something different in a couple of years, maybe not the best spot. How is that generally handled when when you have to relocate facilities, when you go back to the person who has telecommunications facilities there, the city says we're doing the street project? Does that fall on for the relocation and any consequences associated with that?
The same. It's the same process and procedures that we would use with a DTE pole. We would, we'd go to DTE as long as I'm trying to remember now, like with the Third and Broad Street property or Third and Broad Street Road Project, we did have to have some poles relocated, if I remember right. Because it was due to road realignment, there isn't a cost on the city. We would have to check with obviously with the wireless provider, but this pole is set far enough into the right of way off the curve, but still within the right of way that I don't think it would have an impact on the road. And you don't know that a sidewalk is properly if we're going to go there. But if that ever came up, we would go to the applicant and in in ask that they relocated without charging us.
Michelle?
Yes.
It is there? I I think I know the answer to this question, but is there power to this pole?
Yes, there'll be some power to this pole.
How does the power get to this pole from our network and what what impact is there to bring the power to this pole? Which the decorative pole looks great in the picture, by the way.
It's going to all be underground. It'll travel. I'm willing to go into the details, but it would come from a DTE pole underground to this pole, very similar to the way our light poles in downtown operate.
So is is that DTE pole right on Alpine also just to the north, I guess, or north, whatever, towards the library?
Yes, those are all DTE poles there.
Is Lane, is that where the power comes from? Justin, you might need to unmute him.
Oh, there we go. Okay, yes, it is. And and Michelle's right, it will be underground power. We 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 don't typically like to do new poles. That's not what we like to do because it's just kind of a headache, obviously. We like to go on existing poles. So part of one of the revisions that we're doing for Michelle and for you guys is to show, we've already done it. Actually, it's on some revised CDs that you haven't received yet, Michelle, but we're showing why we can't go on those existing DT poles that are all around us over there. And 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 those reasons are based on DTE's requirements. They don't allow us to go on poles with risers and bucks and then all sorts of different reasons. So that they're they're the reason they push us to a new pole when if we had to do one. So they'll we'll go to one of their poles over there and I and forgive me for not knowing which one it is off the top of my head. But they'll they'll run it from there underground to this to this new this new beautiful pole that we've picked out for you guys. So.
Lane, I'm seeing in one of the pictures that's provided, I'm seeing guy anchors that are in close proximity. So I'm assuming that I believe there's a power pole right there.
Yeah, I think it's it's right next to it, I believe.
Okay, what what's the height of the new pole?
Forty feet. And then I believe the pole itself is 40 feet. And then the overall height with the equipment will be 43 feet, one inch to be exact. So the the antenna array on top of the pole was roughly two feet. It's just a little tiny antenna and we have a little gap below it.
Okay.
But yes, it's you can kind of see that if you're looking at the rendering there, that the photo stands as we call it. So it'll be a 41 foot overall height there.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Zach, looks like Zach's hands went up.
A little sideways question here, but who's responsible for maintaining the grounds there? Is that the city or BAP?
The the grounds around the pole? The city does, DPW.
Looks to me like that's going to add to our time to take care of that space. So I just want to bring that up in discussion for future ones. If there's a way we could put it where you don't have to get up or and do more weed with than you have to.
In that particular area, they already do weed with.
Okay. Just a point of clarification. My understanding is this proposed pole is not going to be included. Is that correct? The proposed pole is not going to be included?
Correct.
But our decorative poles currently are included.
They are.
And we it seems we could require.
We have, we have very general standards or we have very general standards to get an applicant to bring it to be similar until we have specific specific design standards in place, which we didn't have time to be able to do. Didn't it wouldn't be wise to deny it just on that. If you're asking if you've got wiggle room to make it a condition.
I would throw up there that I hope rise would add to the table. Finally, we pulled this details are really important, especially in downtown. And I I know they make pulls aside because we just had eight of them or something that we sold not too long ago. That's all. Oh, I would would offer potential language for another for the decision to be that the facility shall not interact with public safety communication systems.
Okay, so leave the motion was made by Griffin and seconded by Wa. Do you both accept that additional condition as part of the motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, both of those things or the second one?
Not interfere.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, thank you. So you're okay with Zach's proposed condition is what I was getting at, the for the second one, the the not interfere with public?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure. All right. So that's part of the motion then as a condition. Okay, okay, just want to make sure, all right, so that's part of the motion then, as a condition. Paul, anybody else in the audience with a question there?
I, I have one, no, nobody, I have one, so. This pole is forty-one foot high, right? It's the highest pole that we have in the area there for our lighting.
The lighting, our poles for lighting come in between sixteen and twenty feet. Our, our decorative poles for like the main street banner. Have about a little bit taller than twenty, if I'm not mistaken, but. None of our, none of the decorative poles that we have um, come forty feet tall, the company that makes our poles do not make. Them forty feet tall. There are other. There are other vendors that we'd have to go to, to find.
And the height of the building there is, is a two-story building there at that corner?
Correct.
Height is?
Um, probably twelve feet to the first, nine feet. Uh, little over twenty-something, the pole will be taller than the building.
Taller than the building and taller by double of any pole we have in the city, correct? I, I guess. When I look at this picture, it looks tall.
It is tall.
It's tall, and it's right in the middle of our downtown. And if I was a citizen just walking in and I see this pole there, first question I would say is why is it there? Uh, why is it so tall, and does it have anything to do with? Uh, our general philosophy of having things. That are, that are not obstructive, any other things we have in the parking, a library, all those things there, we, we have. And I look at this and I see, I, I can tell you right now, there are going to be people that are reacting.
I, I.
And they're, they're not going to be just one or two, it's going to be a number of people that react to this. Pole there in the middle of our town, it's double the size of anything we have, and higher than the middle, double, okay? And so uh, that, that's, I'm concerned that I have, it comes back on us if we make this approval. And so, I think it should be prepared for that.
Exactly.
I assume we, we should be prepared for that because it's gonna happen.
I do understand where you're coming from, um, I can guarantee that the applicant understands that. You'll recall that when the legislature created uh, PA three sixty-five. They created it in such a way that um. It severely constrained municipalities on how they could um. Regulate. These particular facilities in their own public rights of life. It's a dumb dance, and I have to, I, I hear everything you're saying, and I know that people will be unhappy. I wish I had a better way to.
And, and, and if I could, if I don't, if you don't mind, the reason for the height, obviously, you know, we, we want it to be as. You know, unintrusive as possible, as much, as much as you guys do, um. The, the reason for the height is for the coverage, we have to get it to a certain height to get. Over trees, get around uh, you know, certain, certain things, so that's, that's the reason for the, the forty-foot height, if we could do twenty feet, we would do twenty feet, that's. That's the, the standard that the um, the radio frequency engineers of Verizon Wireless use for these, for these type of uh, small cell installations. So that, that, unfortunately, that's, those are what their requirements are. Uh, to, to get that minimum height of forty feet, um, otherwise it just, it wouldn't work, you know? And again, we don't, we don't push for new poles, we don't want to do new poles for this very reason, less is more, we already have enough poles out there, right? So just, just so happens, this just happens to be a spot that DT won't let us jump on any of their existing. Uh, poles for, for various reasons that I'll, I'll have in the drawings for you guys, but. We're, we're aware, we're aware, that's why we want to make sure it's the right color, as unintrusive as possible.
You can paint it pink or green or anything else, or pink or red or anything you want, it's gonna stick up. Now, the color does, uh, determine the, the uh, truth is, that's something to me, it's the height, in the middle of our city. I don't know where other, other cities do, but it's uh, it's my city, entire city, and we should be, try to be, right in our heart there in downtown. There's no other space they could put a pole up there, in, in all, in the area that they could do, or is it the only space that they have?
Let me make sure I understand. Are you concerned about the location that it's proposed? Do you, are you? Would you prefer it to be set back farther on Alpine, closer to the DTE poles, or, I'm, I'm trying to understand?
DT, DT equals are how tall, forty-three feet?
The DTE poles, oh no, the DTE poles are. They're way taller than forty feet, they're like double that. The DTE power poles, they're, yeah, this isn't going to come anywhere close to that. And if they were going to, if they had been able to use the DTE poles, they wouldn't have been at the top, they would have come down in the vicinity of the forty feet.
How tall will the real, this is not a co-location?
This is not a co-location.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm assuming that you do have a, a different plan set that didn't get included in the packet, is that true?
The.
That the plan set that's, that's in the packet is for site fifteen zero two six, and I believe the picture of the green poles that was provided is site number fifteen zero two seven. So I, I realize there's two unique sites. How tall is the co-location pole? On the one on Dexter and Arbor?
With the thirty, thirty-seven feet, one inch.
Thank you, Lane. So, so Paul, the pole, I mean, relative to the pole that's. On Dexter and Arbor, that they're gonna put their equipment on that's already there. This pole is. If I'm doing the math right, six feet taller.
Uh, three, three, uh, three feet taller.
Oh, sorry.
Four, four, four feet.
All right, that thirty-seven to forty-one, is that what you're telling me, Lane?
Yes, yes.
All right, I wrote, I wrote down forty-three, my bad, okay, fair enough.
Sean, would it be helpful to see a picture if we could bring it up on company of the location?
Of which location?
Uh, the Alpine one.
I mean, I know where that location is, I, I mean, I'm just asking, you do have a unique site plan for the other, for that location, right?
We do, and if I ask if you want us to bring it up because we can do that.
No, I was just trying to compare between the two, you know, as opposed to, I mean, since we're, since we're talking about the topic of height. It's understandable that it might come up, th- this is not a co-location, this is a unique pole, but the one on Dexter and Arbor that's part of our next item. Is on a DTE pole, and I was just, you, you said that you made the comment that the DT poles nearby are a lot taller.
Correct.
I don't know if that's true or not true.
One in Dexter and Arbor Road is an AT&T pole.
Okay.
Well, I have your hand, Sean.
Okay, okay, thanks, Paul, Wah, floor is yours, thank you, Paul.
Um, I have a question, so, and then some comments, but this pole, it looks to me, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure, but. The circumference of this pole is smaller than our light poles, correct?
No, actually, I think it's.
Is it bigger?
It's gonna be a little bigger, yeah, because it's a taller pole, it's.
Oh, I guess, yeah.
It's gotta have a little more groove.
Okay, all right, so, interesting, so i- is there any way to move it further away from Main Street? In the same location, just down the row, this question. But I also just want to say that like, somebody who grew up in the country who didn't have any poles anywhere. Like, this is just a sign of the times, guys, like, I mean, this is, we want our cell phones to work, people are gonna have to get used to this. I don't like it, I don't want to look at it, but I want my phone to work. And so, I, you know, I mean, it's just something that I think we're fortunately or fortunately or probably want to look at it, and have to adjust to.
Um, so initially, the applicant had proposed the pole to be um. A little north of where it currently is located, the difficulty though with the location that they had picked is. It was too close to a water line, wasn't it?
Okay.
Yep, yep, yep.
Service line, sewer line.
Fire department, fire, water service line, ser- on a service to the fire department.
Well, and I, I guess, that's my reading of this whole thing is, I mean, we're pretty restricted. In a lot of different areas with what we can and can't do, and I just, you know, I mean, we may not like this, but. I feel like the due diligence has been done, this is, especially with that answer, it's like, okay, great. I mean, like I said, I don't necessarily want to look at it either, but what are we gonna do?
It's, it's a, it's a delicate balance, but you're right, this is a sign of times, but that doesn't mean that we just roll over, and uh, again, we've. We've made it really clear from the get-go, Lane, that uh, can um, chime in, when we did the pre-app meeting. It was literally one of the very first things that we talked about was. This is the first one, this is right in the downtown, and we have to do, we need you to do everything you can to make this blend. Because it is going to be such a difficult build to spot.
Well, and then with that said, I do tend to agree with what Zach was saying about, I mean, yeah, I do, I do see the effort that we're making to make it look like. Our other poles, but being that it is right there. I know if we don't have the wiggle room to make it, would it be a flooded pole, is that what you're saying, then we don't, but I would like to say that to Zach.
So one thing we can do is you can ask the applicant if they're willing to. Provide a flooded pole that would look more like the one that we have, I just think with that location.
And, and we can do that, that, that's, that's not a problem at all, we have several poles that are Verizon approved. Um, in other words, they're poles that we're already using, in, in. We're dealing with this with, with downtown Lansing, we're trying to put up a new pole right across the street from State Capitol. The hardest pole I've ever put up in my entire life. And, and you, and you know that area, so those decorative light poles is, is, you know, so. I get it, I completely get it, so if there's, we, we've got a bucket of poles, so to speak, that, that we can. Throw at you guys and see if you want to change the way it looks, whether it's flooded or not flooded, that's, we can work with that, obviously, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you, before you ask your question, do you want to add that as a condition based on what the applicant is saying?
I mean, I'd be fine with that if you want to have that.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Okay, did, did I hear that Jamie and Wah both indicated they'd like that as a condition as part of the motion?
Yes, yep.
Okay, that's two small things we've added then.
I'm writing them down.
Maybe she's got a hand up for a shot.
Okay, Jamie, thank you for waiting.
So I pulled up, um, Public Act three sixty-five, so then twenty eighteen. Uh, under one, no, two E, says an authority shall not deny an application, and that's all that's following the plan. Three, um, conditions, the denial is supported by substantial evidence contained in a written record. That is publicly released intrinsically. Two, there is a reasonable basis for the denial, three, the denial would not discriminate against the applicant. With respect to the placement of the facilities of other wireless providers. And then immediately below that three A, we lost the reading. It says an authority's review of an application for a zoning approval is subject to all the following requirements. Basically says an applicant's business, on the type of piece of small cell wireless facility. Wireless support structures or technology to be used is presumed to be reasonable. This presumption does not apply with respect to the height of wireless facilities or wireless support structure. An authority may consider the height of such structures in its zoning review, but shall not discriminate between the applicant and other communication service providers. So my question here is, in this particular location, one, is this saying, and I don't know if we have the council. Provide us any direction or any part of this. Based on my reading of this, is this saying that, I mean, a lot of it seems to be saying you can't discriminate, discriminate against one wireless provider, you can't require something of them that you wouldn't require of somebody else. In this particular location, what if we said we don't want it, you know, higher than X, is this, does anybody know, is this saying that we can allow that? As long as we, we would require it of any other wireless provider?
Which section again are you?
So I have section seventeen, three A.
In the, what is the heading above it, is that the authority-owned poles, or is that?
This just, it's four sixty dot one three one seven zoning review and approval, application of approval or denial, I don't see anything higher than that.
Okay, without having it in front of me, and I apologize, um, I brought our app or our ordinance, I did not bring the public app. Um, the, I can tell you that the standards for review that are in the um, in the act, I can't tell you the section. Um, but they're in our ordinance, um, standards for review, city may grant or deny the location and installation. Um, of any small cell facility pole or wireless support structure prior to the installation, if the installation would. Uh, material interfere with safe operations of traffic control equipment. Um, materially, materially interfere with sightlines or clear zones for transportation or pedestrians. Materially interfere with compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act of nineteen ninety. And or any similar federal, state, or local standards uh, regarding pedestrian access and movement. Materially interfere or endanger the use of city bike paths, walkways, parks, and recreation areas used by city residents. Materially interfere with maintenance or full. Um, unobstructed use of city's public inf- utility infrastructure, materially interfere with maintenance or full. Unobstructed use of city's drainage facilities as it was originally designed or not to be located a reasonable distance. Uh, from drainage infrastructure to ensure maintenance. Failure, fail to comply with spacing requirements is set forth in the article, our, our ordinance. Failure to comply with all applicable codes, failure to comply with design and concealment requirements is set forth um, within the uh, ordinance as well. Those are the um, those are the um, standards by which you. If it's demonstrated, that you would be able to deny.
So yeah, I guess what's not clear to me is, here it says, you know, the denial would not discriminate against the applicant with respect to the placement of the facilities of other wireless providers.
If that's under the zoning portion, those things that can be done under zoning?
Yeah.
Those are separate, that's something separate, because, so. What they're doing, the co-location in the new pole falls under those things that we cannot zone for, that's why it's in the general code.
Okay.
Um, uh. I think the part that you're looking at are the ones specifically that are governed by someone.
Okay, it's hard to tell the way it's.
No, I get it, it is the, it is not an easy app to navigate.
Right. I just want to make sure we're not missing anything, maybe people are concerned about height now, which we're not missing about.
I can almost ninety-nine percent guarantee there's nothing we can do about that.
Well, I have your hand, Sean.
Okay, Ms. Hubbard?
Just as a, as a piggyback of that, I mean, isn't this height, I mean, again, obviously, I. My personal opinion is clear that I'm not, but the functionality is linked to the height, correct? I would ask, what's the, sorry, Lane, like, you know, so it has to be, it can't be twenty feet, or it's not in a certain purpose, it's just, you know, is what it is.
Well, I, I, I know, that sounds horrible to say it like that, I mean, it is, but, but yet to answer your question, if we could do twenty feet, we would do twenty feet, we would. We want to look the most unintrusive as possible, I mean, we're, we're friends with the city. So we're all kind of working through this together, and I forgot the, the person who was talking about, you know, it's a service, so we're trying to operate and, and serve. The population, but, but be as in the background as we possibly can, and sometimes we're very good at that. And sometimes we're not, and a lot of it's just because of geography and, and where everything is laid out, but. But that forty feet obviously wasn't picked from the air, that's, that the engine, a- all of our sites are forty feet, thirty-seven, forty-one, forty-two, whatever, but it, it's right around that, that spot. It, it's right around that, that spot. So it's, that's, that's the height that they need for this technology to get their biggest. Saturation of, you know, this technology to everybody's cell phones. Twenty, thirty feet just won't do it for, for various reasons, whether it be buildings, whether it be trees and foliage. There's various reasons why they had to get to it, to that minimum of forty feet. Minimum. I'm having a tough time. I've got to be forty feet of the Grand Rapids Airport. And I'm struggling with that forty feet tall at the airport. So.
Thank you, Lane. Donna?
Yeah, um, could it be moved out of downtown? And made higher if it were in a lot, in a more, a less conspicuous place? And maybe that's not possible, but. The other thing I think is that I could just turn and look the other way, but. I won't do that unless I know that I have to do that. So that's my question. Could it go someplace else?
So, so. The, the, the short answer is, we're, we're in a very, small cell technology is, is, is unlike what you're, what you normally had dealt with maybe in the past with cell phone towers. Normal two hundred towers, okay? Those you could get away with was moving half a mile down the road. Even a mile down the road because the distance, the technology travel was so long, so far, okay? With small cell, it's much, much more, um, uh, it's, it's much more defined and, and in other words. They only want to be in literally about four to five hundred feet radius. Where they kind of put an X in it. So when I show you guys the revised CDs. Showing why we can't go in the surrounding DTE poles and we have to do this new poles, it's a very small area. It's, it's literally that, that, that. Intersection, if forgive me, I keep forgetting the name of the intersection there.
Alpine and Main.
Thank you, thank you. So it's, it's, they, they, they have to be right there. I mean, we, we can move around a little bit. We can move just a little bit, but we can't go down to the next. Block. It, it, that's why it has to be. And unfortunately, not unfortunately, I guess, and how you look at it, you know, five G's coming right behind it, there's going to be a lot more of these. Now, ninety percent of this stuff is put on existing poles. So it's, it's not really an issue when we, when we talk about the next pole, it, you'll see how much easier that installation is. I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to answer it the best I can. We can move a little bit, but just not a lot.
Okay, so if I, if I could build on that, Paul, please. Two things. First, I want to address on the whole, uh, the height. There are restrictions that are in the state law and in our ordinance. Excuse me, as it pertains to the site, the utility pole for a small cell cannot exceed forty feet above the ground. And then the small cell facility that gets installed can't extend, well, it can't extend more than five feet above the top. So that's the limit would be forty-five feet total. They're, they're coming in at forty-three in inches. The second thing is, um, the reason that these call that. You also, that they, the providers are also coming to be smaller poles. Within shorter distances of each other is. If you think about it, we are all walking around with these little computers in our hands, our cell phones. They are, they're more than just a phone. They're, they're a handheld computing device. We are all walking around with them. In order to provide the coverage for the amount of traffic being used. Those big cell towers don't do it all anymore and with. Four G and now five G like Lane said, coming on the heels. Sorry about that. Yeah, no, that was, um, so sorry about that. In order to provide the coverage and the service that people expect with their cell phones. Going back to what last one, this is the technology. And I'm sure there are others who can speak much more eloquently to the technology end of this. But I hope that, that helps to give some.
Yeah, everything, everything is data driven now. Data, data, data. Everybody's on YouTube, everybody's on. Email. It's, it's not like the old days, ten, fifteen years ago when it was, you know, phone calls. Now it's data driven and these small cells are getting it at the street level. That's what we're, that's what we're doing now. We're just saturating. Everybody and everything. With the ability for you to, you know, to use your computer. This is what you're doing all day, every day. So. There'll be more, but not less, unfortunately.
I got a question, Sean.
Okay, Paul, go ahead.
Is this, I mean, I should use the word exclusively, but does it basically improve? The service for the city of Dexter? And, and the citizens and the businesses in it, or does this provide? An opportunity for people outside of the city, north? West, they have better service?
No, 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 this is all localized right there in that area. So these. Where these spots are picked and chosen by Verizon is through their engineering department. So they, they look at everything and they see where there's dropped data, dropped calls, not good service, holes in the coverage, wherever that may be. That's, that's what, they didn't just pick it out of the, in air, they, they, they analyze all this all day long, every day, is what they do. And so they go, this, this is, this is where people are, are dropping. They're not, they're, they're buffering. They're not getting the data to their phones fast, fast enough. This is the spot we need. I, I need them here. And then they, they'll, they run it, and I'm not an engineer by any stretch, but. You know, they, they run analysis on that. They see how much, how many people, how many pops, population. Are, are dropping calls or more importantly buffering on their, on their, uh, you know, on the internet, whether it be through app, applications or whatnot. So they know where their hotspots are. And that's a hotspot. You have, you have two in Dexter, this one and the one we're about to talk about.
So if I, if I have a system come to me and says, I don't like where it's, it's located, I don't like the height of it. I can say honestly to them that this is the best location and your, will be improved or will not be worse. That is today? Or is that incorrect statement that it also is going to be? People outside the village that will have that proven as well? Or talk about the city itself?
Yeah, the, the map is on page sixty-nine.
I, I know, I just want to make sure I understand what it's saying.
It will, so I can give you a, a, an, um, real time example. My phone that I have, I, what, Verizon is my provider. And one of the things I've noticed in the last few months, well before they even came into their app. Is I'm not, I should be having four bars. I used to have four bars all the time. I haven't been getting four bars whether I'm in the office or just walking within the downtown. This poll, and this is a question I did ask them, uh, because of the experience I've had. This poll will ensure that I now have the four bars that I'm supposed to have or used to have. And anybody else experiencing that same issue, it will improve.
And what, and what I'm assuming, and I can go back to my engineer, and I do so many of these, uh, but I, it's. Just looking for this aerial view, there's a lot of businesses around there. And I don't know, I think a lot of those are brick buildings. That's going to significantly improve their end coverage, um. On their, on their cell phones immediately, right there in that, just that one block area. I don't know what all the businesses are there, but there's a lot of them. So they're, they're going to see a significant, um, uh, you know, they're going to see their coverage a lot better just, just on that installation alone. And of course, and of course your traffic, you know, you're through traffic.
Lane, does anybody ever co-locate on your poll?
No. We'll put five G on top of it if, if we can, but no, no one co-locates on our poll.
Okay, so you'll be, you'll be the only one using that poll, is that?
That is, that is correct. Yes, sir.
So we don't have to worry about somebody else putting something on there that's not green or not.
They're going to come to you and ask if they can go across the street.
They could go. Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of too. But you're probably right.
Aaron, you're next. Yeah, uh, so if I'm correct, this only affects customers of Verizon, right? And when you talk about like small businesses or the local businesses benefiting off this. Is, are, are they really benefiting off this? Are they all Verizon customers or like?
The, this question is laying in. Is, is it only going to benefit Verizon users or will it affect? Everybody, whether they use Verizon?
Well, I think it'll only affect Verizon customers, but like, is that like? Enough of like a majority there at least that it does, uh. Like when people ask like, oh, why is this year? We can actually like, oh, it's at, at least.
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah. And, and, and that's what the coverage maps, um. Should, should reflect for you guys. And I, and I know, you know, Michelle touched on it briefly in her opening remarks about the coverage map, but. They're not easy to read. I, I get it. They're coming from these radio frequency engineers of Verizon. I'm used to reading them. Cause I've been around them for years, but, but those coverage maps, and we'll, we'll try to get some better ones, obviously, to you guys to, 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 to show you. In, in sometimes more simpler fashion, because sometimes reading them, it kind of gets, you know, they're, they're hard to read sometimes. But that, those coverage maps should really be able to show you the difference. In the coverage before and after this pole is installed or the antenna is live on air. You should be able to significantly see a difference and you can actually see why they picked that spot, why the engineer said this is, this is why we need this spot.
Yeah, but like, is there enough, I guess. My question was more specifically geared towards when you, uh, talked about like local businesses and such benefiting from this. Is there really enough people to the, what were we going to justify, I think this poll down that kind of affects like everyone's say?
Verizon seems to think so because, um, obviously they're in the business to making sure that the customers are happy. They're not buffering, they're not dropping any calls or, you know, their service is, is optimal. So if they feel it's. You know, bad enough or, or the service is not providing enough for the, for the customers for them to invest this kind of money. This is a decorative pole. This is not cheap for Verizon to, to actually build. They wouldn't do it, obviously. They just, they wouldn't be worth their, their money to, to do this. So they, they find it. Um, obviously valuable, valuable enough to do this, this installation for, for the customers that are, that are hurting.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so. We had an original motion. By Griffin to approve, seconded by Wa. Uh, Michelle, can you? Remind me of the two conditions, or let me state, I think the first condition was proposed by Zach. That the, uh. The Horizon poll and the operation of that poll will not. Cause interference with regard to the public safety, i.e. the fire station or any public safety radio that we have in the area?
Correct.
Okay, and then the second. Condition.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. You go ahead.
The second one came from Wa and that was, um, the applicant shall provide a fluted pole to match. Existing poles in the downtown.
Okay, so, so we have those two conditions. Michelle, how will you handle? Uh, review of the language that gets proposed for the. Nineteen hundred megahertz versus the eight hundred megahertz. Will that be urban wireless that helps review that or who, who helps us review that?
Doug will help me with that.
Okay, so that's an administrative review then, right? Okay.
Unless for some, it. In order to meet the deadlines. You ha- you do have. Until October twenty-second to take action, um, but that's before your next meeting. That would require another. A special meeting. If you were so inclined, but I think we could do it administratively and keep council up to, to.
Well, my, my, my question was going to be if we add conditions. And the applicant has to meet those conditions, does that extend the shot clock to use your?
The shot clock is approval. If you make a, uh, uh. If you take action to approve, even if they have conditions, you've approved it.
Okay.
They have to meet the conditions in order for the city to now issue the permit. The issuance of the permit doesn't have a shot clock.
Okay, fair enough. So, so if, so it, so then the October twenty-second part. Really doesn't matter that if we issue a conditional approval and you get language back or. Get a fluted drawing that doesn't have enough flutes or whatever it is, you need to bring it back in front of us. We have time to do that, is what I'm saying. You could, you could do that if you wanted. It doesn't affect anything in the timeline.
Correct. If you have already, if you take action and make it a condition of approval. That shot clock is done then.
Okay. Okay, are there any other hands up on this item? Okay, thanks, Paul. Donna, you're good?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, so just to repeat, motion by Griffin, seconded by Wa to approve, uh, with the two conditions. Uh, the, uh, not, no effect on the, uh, public safety. Uh, communications, if you will, in the area and or. Uh, and the fluted, uh, decorative, uh, design of the pole. Justin, if you could please call the vote, please.
All right, uh, council members, Rob?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
And Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Very good, thank you. Uh, we will move on to M, item M two. Uh, which is consideration of the Verizon Wireless Small Cell Wireless Facility Permit Application. Excuse me, I believe at seventy-nine, forty-four Dexter and Arbor Road. Similarly to the last item, if I could get a motion, please.
I'll make that motion, Sean.
Motion by Fisher, thank you, Donna. Is there a second?
Or Cousins?
Second by Cousins, thank you, Paul.
It, it was a motion to approve, Donna, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
With the conditions listed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Michelle, maybe you want to state the, um. The differences between this, this is a co-location on an existing pole?
So this is a proposed co-location, but on a new pole. Verizon wouldn't be installing this pole. AT&amp;T will need to. The existing pole is not tall enough to hand, to accommodate the small cell facilities. And that's why AT&amp;T would be installing the pole. Excuse me. So the difference between this one and the one in the downtown is it's the same small cell type facility. To be on a pole, but the existing pole out on Dexter and Arbor Road is owned by AT&amp;T. Verbally, they are, um, willing to consider. The co-location and willing to consider putting up the new pole. And I say willing to because I don't have specific authorization from them written. That says it's going to happen. They couch their. Language. So as to say they're working on it, they haven't made a final decision yet. So, um, which is why the conditions of approval are such that. AT&amp;T will be putting up the pole in a condition of approval.
I lost Michelle's voice.
Oh, I'm here. I was looking at the wrong.
Okay, just want to make sure it wasn't me. And I see Donna has her hand up, Michelle. So when you're ready, just call on her, please.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Michelle. Michelle, we, we have approval from AT&amp;T.
Okay, they just haven't provided it yet. Sorry.
Yeah, we, we, we work with AT&amp;T, yeah. I know it seems weird, we're being Verizon, we work with AT&amp;T, we do.
Just a second. I've got all my papers in the wrong order. I apologize. I'm looking for the second one. The conditions outlined in the motion.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate bringing this back. Okay.
Uh, Zach is leading the meeting.
Have a good night, Zach.
Happy birthday. Tell her happy birthday.
Okay, so as I was saying, the first condition of approval, um. Okay, so as I was saying, the first condition of approval, excuse me. The first condition of approval on this particular application is that it's, it's, the condition is that approval of the proposed co-location of the Verizon Wireless Small Cell Equipment does not grant approval of the proposed replacement AT&amp;T pole. Further, AT&amp;T must obtain approval for a small cell wireless facilities permit from Dexter City Council for the proposed replacement of its utility pole located. And then there's specific details on its location. So it's a little long-winded, but in the act of approving this request, you're only approving the small cell facility because AT&amp;T hasn't applied for the pole yet. We were hoping it would be done at the same time, but it wasn't. But we can, we can work with that. This was reviewed with all of the same criteria as I went into with the first one. The differences are we just need the proper authorization from AT&amp;T. Coverage map is the same. We need that same updated information as we needed with the Alpine one. The underground utilities are the same. We need that information, the work plan and the written statement from the licensed engineer explaining why there has to be a new AT&amp;T pole as opposed to the one that is currently there. This will not, that'll pull this. Eventually.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
I just want to make sure it's fluted.
I don't think this will be fluted.
Well, if we make, if we make you do it, we have to make everybody do it.
Well, because this is a wood utility pole versus.
Oh, okay.
In other words, it's the same.
It'd be even nicer. Wood carved wood would be lovely.
It'd be a new wood pole.
With carved tiki heads?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Coat them.
Do you have any questions on this one? That the applicant or staff can address for you?
So this is an AT&amp;T pole. Is there anybody else on that pole?
So AT&amp;T has an existing utility pole that has different fiber.
Okay.
With a number of different providers, AT&amp;T being one. There isn't another small cell provider currently. That doesn't mean that one couldn't apply or won't apply. My sense is that they'll apply for another pole on the Dexter and Arbor Road corridor.
And this is overhead power, by the way. It won't be underground.
Yes, thank you.
So there won't, there won't be ground disturbance for that.
Is that because the Edison's close by?
It's right there.
Right there? Okay.
DTE, yeah.
Okay, okay, DT.
Yeah, I mean, we, we like to keep everything above ground. We, this is the type of installation we love, Mayor. This is it. And an existing wood pole with overhead power. It's, it's an easy install. It doesn't change the look that much. It's.
Got it. Paul, is there anybody in person there that has a question?
I've seen any hands up. Nobody in the audience either.
Okay, so we have a motion by Fisher, seconded by Cousins. Just get back to it. There are what, eight conditions? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we haven't added any, right?
Correct.
All right, is there any further discussion on this one? Seeing none. Justin, if you would, please, can you call the vote to approve of the location that I said incorrectly, 7944, but 7444 Dexter and Arbor Road?
I can do that. Council members, Griffin? Hubbard?
Yes.
Arab?
Yeah.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's is absent. Cousins?
Yes.
And Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Michelle, thank you for your good work and thorough work on this. Lane, thanks for your participation in the meeting and your commitment to answer those questions that we asked you. So we look forward to working with you and the relationship going forward.
I appreciate that very much. And again, I appreciate the council for letting me have opportunity to meet you guys and explain what we're trying to service your seat with. So I'm good friends with David Hasler, so I'm glad to know you guys know each other, Mayor. So that's, I work with him every day. So and then one last thing, Michelle, thank you for all the help that you've provided us as well. So I really appreciate that. They offered on your end as well. So that's been very pleasant. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
It's true. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'm going to drop off.
Yep, no problem. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, item L three on the agenda here, consideration of a proposal from OHM Advisors for construction engineering services for the Third Street and Broad Street Reconstruction Project for an amount not to exceed 142,600. If I could get a motion?
John, if you have more motion for the passage of this podium.
Okay, yeah, a motion, please, Paul, would be great by somebody in the room if I could, or down online.
I'll go ahead. Uh, Griffin, I'll move to approve the proposal from OHM Advisors
Okay, motion by Griffin. Thank you, Jamie.
I second.
Second by Sanav. Thank you both. Okay. Justin, I'll turn it over to you or to Patrick, who's at the podium, whatever you prefer.
Sure. So as councilors aware, we are in the process of preparing for the Third and Broad Street Reconstruction Project. We did receive grant funds for this project through our tip. The project was put out to bid through the M dot bid letting process and the contract was awarded to All-Star Excavating. OHM has submitted a proposal to assist with construction engineering services, including onsite inspection. And basically, this proposal gets us through construction. If Patrick is at the podium, I can't really see him, but if, thank you, Patrick. If Patrick has any, has any thoughts or comments that he'd like to add, it'd be appreciated.
I think, Justin, thank you, council. As Justin mentioned, this really is for our support during the construction, which is probably just out the window here, managing the contractors to get into it. This is a little unique just because of the funding that we have. We actually are going to start some really pretty minor work in the fall here. In fact, there was a pre-construction meeting last week with the contractor to get some of the initial work done. It's really, it comes down to the funding that we have. We actually have to show that we started spending it in some way within this year. So what will happen is we'll do clearing work in the fall here and then the balance of the work will actually start in spring. And we'll come in here, wrap up over the summer. So actually, we're projecting really, so the second street will be in spring. This will be in July, basically. And so again, it starts very minor, we'll basically mobilize in some months. Justin, I'm not sure if we want to talk about the project at all, but for the most part, it will result in needing to close down the road to construct new improvements, but that'll include some new driveways for Dexter Mill as well as fine street parking, places to the Narber River club right out the window here and also dealing with the lingering stormwater problem. It's been present this corner for at least 10 years with some replacements and some sewer that we believe to have been crushed by a fiber optic crew sometime back. A lot of this, this will really clean up this corner, bring range. And we move on to the worst segment within the road network in terms of paper quality. Back and now, back to you, Justin, or questions?
Yeah, and then to kind of build on that, I think you mentioned it includes bicycle lanes. It includes the installation of a new pedestrian crossing at the Third and Broad intersection. Enhanced on-street parking and stormwater work. So it's a, it's a pretty, pretty comprehensive project. And the goal is to start the bulk of the construction in the next fiscal year after July 1 of 2022.
Justin, did we also add a couple of lights near the crosswalk? I can't remember if we added lighting or not.
No, this would be using existing overhead lighting.
Overhead lighting, okay, okay. Fair enough. Paul, are there any questions from the members of council that are in? Pardon me, nobody has their hand up?
Somebody has their hand up.
Okay. Justin, anything further to add?
Uh, not from my end.
Okay, Justin, if you could please call the vote to approve the motion to approve the proposal from OHM for CEI services?
I can do that. Council member, Arab?
Yeah.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yeah.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
And Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. New business item M four, discussion of fire station guiding principles. Before we begin, I guess I just want to ask, do we want to do this tonight without Zach? Or? Or a whole?
Of course, I'd prefer to have Zach here.
I think I would too. I think we committed to trying to do this all together, but I didn't want to be presumptuous.
So I'll move to postpone till the next meeting.
Okay, motion by Cousins?
Second.
Second by Fisher? A discussion on the postponement. Okay, I thank you for that. Justin, please call the vote to postpone until. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't. I really need help with that. Jamie, sorry about my fault. I didn't, I didn't understand the comment. Could you repeat it for me?
Yeah, can we get Chief a copy of the binder?
I think we can probably figure that out, Justin, don't you?
So sorry, I, there was some coughing and I, again, didn't catch the comment about updating the binder.
The chief needs a copy of the binder. Would like a copy of the binder.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. We'll make sure that that happens. Okay, any other hands up? Sorry, I missed your hand, Jamie. Okay, Justin, please call the vote to postpone till October 25.
All right, council member Hubbard?
Yes.
Arab?
Yeah.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin? And Kio?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, new business item M five, discussion slash consideration of winter 2021, 2022 social district and outdoor seating. This is a continuation of the discussion we started at the last meeting, I believe.
Sean, I've come to the podium. If there's any questions that I can answer for council?
Okay, we don't need a motion to start the discussion. If somebody has a question. Wa, is that you?
That's me. I just, I'll just kick off this discussion with a comment or question. So after our discussion last meeting and based on what I saw in the social district firsthand last year, my personal inclination is that I think it would be a good thing to have in conjunction with events, but as reading through this packet, I understand that's not the ideal situation for staff. So I'm wondering if staff can sort of weigh it, if they think there's a balance there or if that's really going to tax staff if we just sit it on a competitive basis, because I don't want to do that. But I want this, if we're going to do this, I want it to make practical sense in terms of how it actually operates.
So at this, in, how can I put this? I appreciate the question that you're asking and the, the, the support for staff and staff isn't just office, it's also the DPW. So I believe right now there are only two events scheduled or talked about for the winter months. One is the ICE Festival and the other is the Holiday Hustle, right? If we're only talking about those two events, it's not, it is not going to be over burdensome on office staff. I would defer to Dan because for the DPW, because it's DPW that would have to move the signage. If if we did it such that we created the signage to be specific to just the event, if we created the signage so that we had listed the two events and we may not have to move the signage each after each event, it would just stay up just before the first event and come down just after the second one. Excuse me. That way we can minimize the amount of additional work that staff might have to have. If you're looking at doing the social district as sort of an open events, somebody proposes one and we're going to respond to it, it becomes a little harder. But I don't want to, I don't want to throw ups. I don't want to throw it up as, as the only reason not to. It has some very good qualities as far as what it can do for the city and for businesses. So if doing it for the two events is, is the only consideration the council will give it, staff can make it work.
DPW would help. Yeah, DPW is going to help DPW, that's for people. Any more work that you're going to add is obviously more work. I mean, we have the hustle, we have, you know, the festival. But if you're going to expand in the areas, it's going to be more work. Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Sean.
Sean, sorry, Jamie?
Yeah, I think it may not be in favor, but yes. I don't really see need for it. I think the businesses that really benefit, the businesses that are going to all, so right there, we're searching who has the chance to benefit. And among those, they all seem to have sufficient outdoor seating areas that they could make use of with the exception of, I think, the birdegrado, but it sounds like you outlined an avenue that they can proceed to, that they can pursue, which is usually the parking spaces around the corner on Main Street.
Correct.
So the only added benefit I see of doing something for just these events, especially for thinking about not even having a business or consumption area, is really just permitting a pub crawl throughout the city between these businesses. So it's not a feeling for me, I guess. I guess I do have one question because people have said, well, COVID regulations have changed. This is something we could elect to enact at any time, say, you know, driving restrictions came back. Is that true?
Correct.
Well, David, can you repeat your question? Sorry. This is.
That, that we could decide to begin a social district at any time. It's not like we have a time. That that we could decide to begin a social district at any time. It's not like we have a timeline on when we can start it. So if indoor dining instructions came in February, and if that was, I mean, I'm not saying that's compelling reason for me even then, but if that is a compelling reason for other members of council, saying no to it now or taking no action on it now doesn't prohibit us from reconsidering or taking action if, say, indoor dining regulations change. So.
Rob has your hand up, Sean.
Saddam?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I agree with Wa. If we can have it for the events, it will create a sense that people can have their drink and walk around the areas. And I think that would be a great thing to add. Personally, I like the idea of a social district, but I don't think in general our downtown has the structure that would support it continuously, right? We don't have a lot of seating that are on the sidewalks, things like that, that would support a continuous social district. But in terms of having it for events, so people can grab a beer from one location and just walk around. And for the events, I think that would be great. Understanding that it will be more work for for everyone.
We'll do our best in many ways.
So so Michelle, if if we if we just approved the social district for the events or for events only, which I'm assuming is like Holiday Hustle and
The ICE Fest.
ICE Fest, are those the only two within the period that typically occur?
That's the only ones that we know about currently.
Okay, is would we be approving the map that is? The map that's in the packet is still is still the one we'd be approving, right?
Correct, the one that adds.
Fillmore?
Fillmore, correct. On page 130. And a bigger version, I believe, is shown on page 141.
Yeah, let me get to that one. Okay, yeah, thanks. That's a better one to see. Well, I'm in I'm in favor of the district. I'm in favor of either full or limited. I think it is an advantage. I think it is something that people enjoyed it, maybe limited experiences last year, but enjoyed. I was thinking that we might be considering like weekends only, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, is what I was thinking we would be steering towards, but once, if there's a motion on the table, I will support anything in favor of of putting this in place because I do think it is a a good tool and it does does benefit our businesses all around, so. No, no further hands on the topic? Anybody want to make a, anybody want to make a motion then?
Just Paul, I I support the idea that businesses are, restaurants are having a tough time. They have still struggle. They all do. It's not bad. It's finding personnel to work. So we're going to go to restaurants last week. They said, no, we're not open, but you can't find people. And they had an alcohol license. They certainly would have benefited if it's something like this, you know, definitely it's still tough times for them. So anything that we can do to help them out, I think it's important that we do that. I don't think maybe wrong, but I don't think any of the people that work that have restaurants here, the bars are, they were called, forgot to been here tonight, they thought we were going to reject change. I think it would be caught a little bit out of. I would not know about it, please change. Jamie has her hand up, Sean.
Okay, I think I thought I saw one go up. Jamie, thanks, Ray.
Yeah, I just have one more question. In your earlier memo, I just want to make sure I have a correct understanding. Did you say you had reached out to the other business owners and the information I got from your update is that the beer gratter felt like they benefited from last year's location? Is that true?
I haven't reached out to them this fall on going and comments that were made when we had it earlier this year.
Right.
Um, so I did, let me step back. Beer Gratter was very happy with it. Aubrey's Worm and Erratic Ales said that they did have some people. It's not overwhelming, you know, it's not something that benefits them, but they support it. So. The pub did not, it's not that they didn't support the social district, it's that they didn't like the tent. They didn't like that special designated consumption. So there's a, we need to make sure that when I explain this, I'm clear. Businesses did not have a problem with the social district. They felt that the tent and the location that we had it didn't benefit everybody.
And this sort of that more thing about how it's not having a tent, is that correct?
Correct. This wouldn't have a tent. So applications in theory would be much more. If I might playing off what you said about council being able to establish that this at any time. And thinking about what Sean said about a weekend only. What if you looked at it starting weekends only, starting in December 31st? See how it goes for that first month of December for weekends only. And before the end of the month would be your second meeting, staff could come back, want any updates, any difficulties that's been comments directly from the businesses, and we can see firsthand how that how it activates the downtown or doesn't. It's just another option to consider.
Yeah, Michelle, I don't, I don't want to create a item like that on the second meeting in December.
Okay.
Okay, typically that's a meeting that we try to keep as late as possible and bills and approvals and sometimes people are gone for the holidays, so.
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate what you're saying. I I'm okay, you know, trying it for a couple of months or so, but I I personally think that that, you know, weekends, weekends, again, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, make the make the most sense for this. It's when the events occur and, you know, we do have the holidays where people are in town over the weekend with a little lighter schedule, that kind of thing. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I think that in terms of trial, I would hate to see us put something out there and then take it away and have to justify it. We took it away because I I don't think that that's a a good plan, the trial piece of it.
Okay, does does anybody want to make a motion on it or we want to hold and bring it back next meeting? What are we thinking?
We got some hands up here.
Oh, Wa, is that you?
Saddam.
Dot Saddam and then Wa. Okay, thank you for the help.
Yes, a question. If we do it over the weekend, would that cause more like enforcement issues for the rest of the week?
Hmm.
Do we see any concern with that?
I personally don't think so, knowing that they have to, you know, they have to give people the beverage to take outside in a plastic cup that's specially marked. You know, they would know when they could do that and when they couldn't.
Wa.
Okay, thanks.
Wa. Wa, Wa, next?
Um, so I'm open to, you know, the idea of that moving over the weekends. I just also wanted to say that with the idea that I first brought up, just having it tied to events, obviously, if I'm wrong, I'm one supporter of this, and I think this is important for the restaurants. But on top of that, I think that's just another enhancement of the, you know, the hustle and bustle of what's already going on downtown. So it's, it's not just that it's supporting, you know, these select few restaurants that serve alcohol. It's just, I don't know, it's enhancing the event to me, really.
Okay.
Really. I guess I'll make a motion if nobody else wants to speak. Can we continue the the downtown Dexter Social District before I finish, though, are we including also the Fillmore in this motion? Including the Fillmore, which is a new one we have here.
So it'd be to include the Fillmore, to continue the social district and include the Fillmore.
Okay, so that's from from what date, Paul?
What date?
December 1st through April 30th.
December 1st to April 30th.
Okay, 12/1 through 4/30, okay? Is there a support for that motion? Second for that motion?
I support.
Support by Saddam, thank you.
Is this every single day or just weekends? I just want to make sure I didn't misunderstand.
Paul, it was your intention every day, right? I'll I'll.
I would say every day, and I can speak during that time. I don't, it's, we, Robert's rules allow it, but the fact is, is that we don't know what the weather's like, okay? So, you know, on Thursday, it could be lousy. And you're on Friday, Saturday and Sunday, and it could be just the opposite. So you think if one week, one day out of the four, it would be okay? You just don't know what it is.
Yep, okay, so your 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 motion, though, is for full time?
Yes.
Okay.
Wa has her hand up.
Okay, Saddam, you understood it to be full time, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay, all right, so.
I have a comment on that, but Wa has her hand up.
Yep, we'll go, we'll go Wa and then Saddam.
So I, the thing about the weather, that's the point. So I just want to make sure that if, you know, we have it every day, we're not doing the tent, which I'm pretty sure we've established. And that would be less labor intensive on staff than if we were to open and close it, correct?
Correct. Yes.
I'm looking at Dan.
I'm not really sure. I mean, we're going to have signs.
Well, instead, we put them out and then take them off three days later.
Well, we're adding signs.
You'll add signs like we did last year at the beginning, and we don't touch them other than to just contain them until the end of it. At the end of April.
There's not going to be any extra seating on the sidewalk that we've got to worry about clinging around or we're going to make the business owners' game show.
That's why I want to clarify, if there was a tent buying it.
There is no tent, but so there's none of that.
No seating outside.
So only what's existing.
And nothing in the burger.
Correct.
The burger spots.
Correct.
So the only thing we're asking from the DPW is to put up the signs and what was and take the signs out.
Correct.
Yeah, and that that was pretty much what I wondered and was my comment of thinking of expansion to support Paul's motion is that in that case, if we are thinking like weekends or we are thinking events specific that adds more work, if we do just have it as is without the tent and whatnot, then it's, so that's, that's where my support was.
Okay. Any further hands or discussion from? The four. What's that, Paul?
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, thank you, sir. Donna, you okay?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Justin, your hand is up?
So just to clarify, no tent, but with barriers.
I think I heard no barriers in the parking lot.
It's the signage.
It's just the signage. It still is the areas that's shown on the map, but no no barriers, no tent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, everybody clear? The motion is made by Cousins, second by Saddam to approve the social district for 2021, 2022, starting on December 1, going through April 30th with no tent and no designated barrier area in the parking lot. And we're approving the map that's on page 141, which has the sidewalk down to Fillmore area on the south side of Dexter Road and the crossing area at Baker and Dexter Harbor. Okay, Justin, please call the motion to approve.
All right.
For the the vote to approve.
Uh, councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin? Hubbard?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah.
Michelle says absent. Cousins?
Yes.
And Kyo?
Yes. Okay, motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. New business item M6, discussion slash consideration of City Council Rule Number 17, filling vacancy on council. I think there's most of the information in the packet that we've seen before at one point. Jamie, is that your hand?
Yeah, but I was going to move to postpone until our next meeting. I would be happy to discuss in the meantime, but I wouldn't want to make a decision until after.
I didn't hear. I couldn't hear her.
She was, she said she wanted to make a motion to postpone, but she wanted to sort of talk that through, I think, before making it.
What?
Who to postpone any decision?
I think we need to have Zach here for this as well. I know I'm out of order, but I think that it's something that he would prefer to participate in.
Okay, I I have no problem postponing it and and having the discussion with all seven. We are getting, I think, a pretty busy agenda on the 25th, so if my memory serves me correctly, we have the.
We'll push it back to then.
Okay, well, I'm just asking. We can have a busy meeting, but.
I would be fine if it was, if it was a better weather. I don't see this as the most frequent thing.
Okay. All right, so Ms. Griffin, then can I take it? You're making a motion to postpone until the first meeting in November?
Second.
Okay, second by Fisher. Thank you both. Any hands up, any discussion?
It'd be the correct date in November.
I believe that's the correct date, Paul, yes.
That's correct.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, please call the vote to postpone, Justin.
All right, councilmember Griffin? Yeah, sorry, I didn't hear anything. Councilmember Griffin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Hubbard?
Yes.
Arab?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
And Kyo?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion carries on that to November 8th. New business item, not new business item, next item is item N, council comments. And we'll start with Saddam this evening, please.
Um, other than, thank you, everyone who worked on Dexter Crossing and the roses looks very, very beautiful.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cousins?
I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Okay, Wa?
Not there for me either, thanks.
Okay, Ms. Griffin?
I have two comments. One, I meant to bring up during Justin's report. Just like in the Sunday Times news this weekend, I saw our posting for the public hearing for the, I think, the complex of interest ordinance. And I just noticed, it doesn't make, I don't think, any reference to the fact that the meetings are also streamed on Zoom. So you know, it says interested parties are welcome to attend the public hearing and present their comments, written comments. So there should be some initiative city managers office. I don't know if during this time, although we are sort of hybrid, if our public hearing, if there's a protocol of noting that in our public hearing, even if you don't have a Zoom link available at the time to make a public hearing, we can at least make mention that remote participation is an option. As long as it's fine for all hearings, I guess.
I can, I can, I can include that information as part of the email update notice that we also send out about public hearings.
Okay, and then in the future, the one in the paper could also mention the Zoom.
Uh, i- if if we're. Uh, i- i- if if we're if we're able to continue doing it, so that, I mean, that'll end as of December thirty, yes.
Right, that might be our last one, okay. And then I also need to get other people, so there was a letter to the editor from a Michael Smith. I know there's no address for a city. Commenting about the traffic circle on Dexter Chelsea and Main Street. I thought there was some interesting comments there, and so I just want to draw people's attention to that if they had it already seen that.
He's a down, down a week, a day short or a day short.
Say that again?
He's a day, a day late and a dollar short.
Thank you. And then Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I just quickly, I'm always pleased when someone compliments our staff. And considers that they were helpful to them, and it was nice to hear the gentleman that attended the meeting tonight say those things about you, Michelle. So kudos.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Alex?
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Aaron?
No comments.
Okay, I think that concludes the council comments. We are back around to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak this evening? We'll go with the people present at thirty-five fifteen. Anybody there that needs to speak tonight? Okay, I see one hand on the Zoom meeting recording. Actually, two, maybe. We'll take John, looks like again.
Wait a minute, I thought I was turning mine off.
That's okay, Donna, we'll go with.
Got it, done.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, this is John Scharf. I I decided to attend your meeting tonight because of the fire station topic and. I respect your decision to postpone. I thought while I was here, though, that I would share some other insight and advocate for something. I've attended a couple of the Washtenaw County apportionment meetings. And I wanted to let the council know that there is. A lot of participation from people on the east side of the county at these meetings. And not so much participation from people on the west side of the county. In my opinion, and I have not attended every meeting, but. I also wanted to bring it to your attention that there are multiple proposed maps on the county website. Ranging anywhere from nine districts to fifteen districts. And. In at least some of those proposed maps, my township is cut in half. And at least some of those townships, Dexter City is cut in half. I would like to share with you that I plan to advocate as much as possible that they include the. Service area of the Dexter area Fire Department all in one single district. And I would encourage all of you to learn and potentially participate in the next apportionment meeting, which is scheduled for one week from today. I think they decided to do it in the middle of the day, but I'm, I don't recall the time. Anyway, thank you very much. Nice work tonight.
Thanks for your comments, John. John, those maps, those apportionment maps relate to the voting or to?
So the the apportionment, there is a five-member body. It is the county treasurer, the county clerk, the county prosecuting attorney. The chair of the Republican Party for Washtenaw County and the chair of the Democratic Party for Washtenaw County. Those five people are charged with deciding how many county commissioners there are for Washtenaw County. And also deciding which, what, where the lines are for those districts.
Gotcha, okay, for the number of commissioners, okay.
Number of commissioners and where the lines are, and there is a very diverse. Set of opinions among these five people about how many county commissioners they should be and how the launch, the line should be drawn. This will affect our entire county and our local community for the next ten years.
Interesting. So once they, once they put the or or select a scenario, what happens then? Do people vote on that or or is that just how it is?
Those five people vote and that's just how it is.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks for calling that to our attention. I was not aware of that.
Yeah, their their next, their next meeting is Monday, and if you can't participate, they definitely highly value written input.
Okay. Thanks again, John. Appreciate the extra explanation.
You're welcome. I appreciate it.
Okay, Justin, do we see anyone else with a hand up? I do not.
We're all set here, Sean.
Okay, Paul, thanks for helping your, everybody, counsel patience with me being away. I look forward to seeing you all in two weeks, if not sooner. I'll seek a motion for adjournment, please.
So moved.
Moved by Fisher?
I support.
Second by Sanam. Thank you at nine sixteen officially, Justin. We are, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thanks for a good meeting, everyone. Have a good night. Drive safely, walk safely.